It's Sunday. Today is Monday, July 24th, and it's 3:00.
Recording in progress.
We're going to begin today's work session. The mayor is out of town today, so he asked me to sit in on his behalf. And the two things we have on our agenda are, number one, the Elevation Land Trust presentation, and two, sponsorship of Caveman Music Festival. So who is here to present the first one? The Elevation Land Trust.
Mayor Potem, I did just email with a guy named Charles, who is supposed to be on our Zoom call, and I did clarify the link with him. But what we might want to do... Oh, he just popped in. Good then.
There he goes. Mr. Allison, are you there?
Hi, Charles, welcome. Hopefully you can hear us, you are muted. Are you muted?
Oh, geez.
Hi, Charles, welcome.
Hello, how's it going all?
Good, good. I'm Steve over here as city manager, and we just started our work session. We're ready for your presentation, so I'm going to ask Kimberly to make you the presenter.
Wonderful, sounds good. My colleague Lauren is having some trouble accessing the Zoom link.
Sorry about that. I'm glad we got to connect with you, though.
Yeah, absolutely. So I just tried to send it to her.
Okay, you should now be the presenter.
Okay. I'll go ahead and show my screen.
It looks like someone else has joined us, too.
Can you all see the PowerPoint?
We can.
Okay. All right, I see some folks were joining the waiting room on Zoom, and I just let them in. I hope that's all right.
Yeah, please.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and get started. That sounds good to you all?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Perfect. Well, thank you all so much for having us. My name is Charles Allison Godfrey. I am the staff attorney and policy associate for Elevation Community Land Trust. We're delighted to be with you all today. And with me is my colleague Lauren DeBel. Lauren is Elevation's chief strategy officer, and we're really excited to be here with you today. Just sharing an overview of Elevation's work, Community Land Trust generally, and overall describing how partnerships with Elevation could benefit the city of Trinidad. And if you have questions, please, indirectly at any time. I understand from Steve that we have some questions. There are some time for questions reserved at the end as well, but we're also happy to answer questions during the presentation itself. So Elevation Community Land Trust was founded in 2017 by a collective of types of foundations who recognized the value of permanently affordable homeownership for Colorado. These foundations really observed the dramatically increase in prices for for-sale homes and recognized that some intervention was necessary. Our first staff was hired in 2018, and our first homeowner was, I believe, in 2020. So the vision of those funders when Elevation was first founded was to create a platform for a nonprofit to take philanthropic money from those foundations and partner with Colorado communities to create equitable opportunities for families using permanently affordable homeownership. And the way we create that permanently affordable homeownership is through the Community Land Trust model. So Community Land Trust began during the civil rights movement in rural Georgia as a mechanism for black farmers who were previously sharecroppers or otherwise had tenuous control of their land to place land ownership in community control and insulate the land from the troubles of any one individual. Today, however, Community Land Trusts are most commonly used to create permanently affordable homeownership opportunities in high-cost markets. Community Land Trusts treat homeownership as community infrastructure rather than as a speculative profit-making venture. We also hope that most of our homeowners will own their Community Land Trust homes and then use the equity that they accumulate during their CLP homeownership to move into a market-rate home. And nationwide studies of Community Land Trusts have found that more than half of Community Land Trust homeowners do indeed move into market-rate homeownership. There are almost 300 Community Land Trusts around the United States, and the model has received increasing attention from media outlets ranging from the Denver Post all the way to the New York Times. The way that Community Land Trusts preserve permanently affordable homeownership is by separating ownership of the land and the homes that sit atop that home, also called the improvement. So in a single-family home, our homeowners own the improvement on the land, including private sewer and utility lines, fences, sheds, and of course, the home itself. The land trust retains ownership of the actual land. Then, in a condominium, you still own the improvements, your condo, but instead of the HOA owning the land beneath your condo building, Elevation owns that land. And the benefits here are really twofold. So first, taking the land out of the transaction allows Elevation to sell the homes for far cheaper than they would be otherwise, since the homeowner isn't purchasing the land. Second, and perhaps most importantly, it allows Elevation to ensure future affordability. Because our nonprofit owns the land, we can determine how the homes may be resold. And we do that using our limited resale formula, wherein when the homeowner goes to sell their home, they are entitled to 25% of the appreciation that has accumulated in the home. And the other 75% of the appreciation stays with the home to keep it affordable to the next buyer. And I know our time is limited, but if you'd like, I can go into a greater discussion of that resale formula at the end of our presentation. Ultimately, the resale formula and Community Land Trust as a whole are a way to balance the interests of current households who need affordable for-sale housing, as well as the interest of future households that we know will also desire affordable for-sale housing. And that's why we call Community Land Trust "permanently affordable housing." A good contrast to understand why we use that word "permanent" and why it's so important is to compare it with a standard down payment assistance program where there are no resale restrictions. So if a nonprofit, or a foundation, or a public entity gives a household $50,000 to help them buy a home, but allows that household to sell the home on the market, then that single household can benefit enormously, because they get the benefit of that $50,000, but they get to sell at market rate. The drawback there is that future low-income households that need affordable homeownership will need an even bigger subsidy from the nonprofit, or local government, or whoever else is creating the down payment assistance program, just to afford that same house. And I think that really illustrates how Community Land Trusts are an efficient use of government funding. Elevation Community Land Trust specifically is one of the few statewide CLPs in the nation. We work in partnership with local governments across Colorado, as well as the state government, to fund our work. We currently have partnerships with 12 local governments and the state government to fund that work. We also have 210 homeowners in our trust in dwellings that range from studio condos to four-bedroom houses. And all Elevation homeowners need to income-qualify at 80% or below area median income. On top of that, we're also really proud of the fact that 60% of Elevation homeowners identify as people of color, and 44% of Elevation homeowners identify as female-headed households. And both of these statistics are far above national averages. The most important thing about Elevation's role as a statewide CLP is that we will grow to have a 1,000-home portfolio by 2027. And the reason why that 1,000-home goal is so key is what we call the point of organizational sustainability. So when ECLP reaches 1,000 homes, our organization's operations will be fully sustained by the housing portfolio. And then any other additional funding that goes in can go towards creating new homeownership opportunities rather than supporting the operations of the organization. And this is something that usually isn't attainable in Community Land Trusts, because they are so hyper-local, and it's the reason that we're so excited about Elevation as a statewide model, one of the few statewide models in the U.S. So to talk a little bit more about development specifics, I'm going to pass it to my colleague Lauren.
Thanks, Charles. So yeah, just to add on to what Charles has said, specifically a little bit about our development approach. So I imagine you are all aware of these two developers that we've been talking with about opportunities in Trinidad. But typically, we work with development partners, and they're really doing the part of this process, everything from identifying the sites to going through the entitlement process. They are creating essentially their side of the project pro forma, so what it is going to cost to build these products, working with the G C, building in their contingency on the construction side and the construction financing. And then they are really doing the construction management all the way through C O. Elevation acts as a partner with those developers, both by, you know, working on our side of the equation, applying for different grants, and really working with that development partner to create a purchase-and-sale agreement that they can then take to their construction lender and use that as leverage for better financing terms. And it really reduces the risk on their part, because they essentially have a takeout on completion. Elevation, as Charles mentioned, is qualifying all of those households within our program, 80% below of the area needing income. We are doing the sales and the associated marketing for all of those units. And then we are managing that ongoing affordability, both as individual homeowners sort of evolve through their homeownership. So if they have a qualified capital improvement, or they need to refinance, or, you know, Elevation provides support during all of those activities, as well as when that household is ready to sell, making sure that that home is then passed on to another qualified household. Some of the challenges specific to rural communities that we've seen on the acquisition and development side, so really just trying to balance the cost of land and, we say, the lack of affordable inventory. So one of the things that we have found is when there is more than aging inventory of homes that were... Oops, I think I lost the... You know, when there are homes that were built, you know, 10, 20, 30-plus years ago, and that's the majority of the affordable inventory, it's really hard to build new product that reaches that same price point. Construction's costs, and we certainly, almost all our development partners are looking at both modular and conventional, sort of stick-built, construction these days. And we've seen those costs rise, fortunately, across both of those different construction types pretty significantly. Interest rates, you'll see on both the acquisition and development and the sales side of this slide. But first, those interest rates are impacting the development further as they go to get construction financing, and therefore is impacting the price that they need to sell Elevation units to in order to meet their side of the equation. Talk in a minute about how that's also impacting us on the sales side. And then just the capital constraints. So obviously, as things occur in the external market that shift the real estate market and how lenders are willing to lend and the different requirements, Elevation obviously has a really unique model, but we're still subject to all of those external factors that largely impact real estate. On the sales side, one of the biggest challenges we've seen since we've seen a huge jump in mortgage interest rates... Talk a little bit about our pricing, but we do adjust our pricing to account for interest rates. So we essentially price our homes at the lower of either what is affordable to a household at 70% of the area needing income, so that we have that range of AMIs between... It's priced at 70%, households are eligible, up to 80% AMI. Otherwise, we end up with this really narrow, really narrow slice of incomes where people can qualify. So it's either the lower of what's affordable to that household at 70% AMI, or 78% of least old appraised value. So in these markets where we've seen really high comps and really high sales prices, we've seen more properties that have been limited by AMI. But just a little bit about that calculation is when mortgage interest rates go up, essentially, our sales prices have to go down, so that the housing payment to that 80% or 70% AMI household remains the same. So we work with qualified lenders. We have to make sure that every household can meet both the front end and the front-end and the total debt-to-income ratio. We want to make sure they're not spending more than 33% or 35% of their monthly income on their total housing payment. So the impact that that has for us is we're needing to lower our sales prices, which creates less sales proceeds for Elevation, and therefore increases the gap. And then the last thing on the sales side is the availability of local match. So everywhere we work has different funds available. You know, the city of Denver has a cash portfolio housing fund. I actually live up here in Fort Collins. The city of Fort Collins has a land bank. I know we've talked to some folks at Trinidad about, you know, various sources for local match. But everywhere we work is a little different. Some of the solutions that we have seen and continue to work on, I had just mentioned the land banking. But when municipalities are able to have some sort of land bank and potentially donate, you know, a property into the development, that certainly helps with the total development cost and reducing that cost basis. Fee waivers, so again, in different communities, we've seen the ability to have everything from building permit fees that are reduced or waived, TAP fees, you know, any sort of fee waivers that are available, again, to lower that total development cost. Expedited permitting, so anything that helps us, you know, get from sort of ideation to implementation and get folks in homes sooner helps with that total development cost. We definitely have seen some success around favorable debt from municipal sources. So again, the city of Denver has really been able to positively impact some of our developments by, especially in this interest rate market, by offering a really low-interest debt to our development partners to be able to help with acquisition and construction. If there's questions about Prop 1, 2, 3, Charles is certainly our local expert on that, but certainly encouraging all of our municipal partners to become eligible for Prop 1, 2, 3 funds, and then applying for state funding. So today, I just saw another application for Strong Communities Grant, which applies to infrastructure, and working with Elevation and our partners to help deploy that funding for these various projects. On the sales side, some of the strategies that we're looking at and starting to implement are an interest rate buy-down. So that is really a creative way that Elevation is looking at using that interest rate buy-down to buy down the interest rate for the individual homebuyer, and therefore increasing the price a little bit, but it does end up having the same housing payment for the homeowner. It just is able to help folks get into homes. So we've already seen some success with that. Definitely working to layer county and more local sources for that needed match. Really, just every dollar helps as we try and close these gaps. We've certainly seen some success with local community foundations coming in and being able to help close those gaps for their communities or having more conversations with large employers. So, you know, as school districts and healthcare providers, and even large restaurant groups, and, you know, other folks that are really invested in the community but are having trouble maintaining a workforce. I think there's some really interesting opportunities for large employers to participate in this housing solution. You know, there's, for instance, a $3,000 tax requirement to be eligible for Elevation's program. And so that's one way. We've seen some employers offer, you know, a match for earnest money or a one-time contribution if some of their employees are interested in becoming homeowners. And then U R A and TIF funds are certainly something we're always looking at. Anything that can contribute, again, to closing that gap. Sorry, I know we're running out of time.
Sure.
Next slide. Hand it back over to Charles.
Thanks, Lauren. So I just want to quickly run through a few of the benefits that Trinidad might see through a partnership with Elevation Community Land Trust. First and foremost, the city gets a portfolio of permanently affordable homes that will provide wealth-building opportunities to your community's lower-income residents and help essential workers like service industry folks, teachers, firefighters, and others stay in the community. Just a couple of quick illustrations of what we mean when we say "affordable." So Elevation recently listed its first home in Delta, Colorado, a rural community on the western slope that has seen really dramatically rising prices as a result of folks from surrounding communities like Grand Junction seeking more affordable options. So the Elevation home in that community is priced at $174,000, whereas the average market value for homes selling in Delta is about $340,000. So Elevation is effectively selling homes in that community for half of their market value to allow low-income households to access homeownership. Another example, in June 2023, just last month, the median home purchase price for a single-family and attached home in Colorado was $565,000, whereas the median price of an Elevation single-family and attached home was $261,800. So again, roughly half the cost of the median market price. Another big benefit here is that the city can ensure that permanently affordable homeownership options will be available to its lower-income residents without having to manage the portfolio. So that's definitely something we... a concern we run to a lot, especially in smaller communities. Folks just don't have the bandwidth on their city staff to manage a portfolio of permanently affordable for-sale homes. As Lauren was describing, Elevation does that all ourselves. So, you know, we build a pipeline of qualified buyers. We income-qualify those buyers. We close on the homes with those buyers. And then we also manage resales. So as long as the land attached to that home is in Elevation's Community Land Trust, then we will always be a part of the community and really actively stewarding those homes so that the city doesn't have to. The last benefit I want to highlight is that Trinidad, by using the Community Land Trust model and partnering with Elevation, can increase its homeownership rates for its population of color that have systemically been excluded from homeownership by state and federal policies. Like I said earlier, one thing that Elevation is really proud of is its ability to increase homeownership rates for households of color. And that benefit would be seen in Trinidad as well. There are lots of other benefits, but we just wanted to highlight a few. And that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to take questions on my side.
Great, thank you so much. And we'll take a few minutes and see if council here has any questions or comments. Should I vote on them?
Sir, I just had a question for you. Do all developers and municipalities need the land trustee for asset protection, I guess, from lawsuits? And if so, if a person's not happy with their trustee, do you change that? Can you change the trustee?
Sorry, I got a question for us.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So you mean if the homeowner is unhappy with Elevation's ownership?
Yes.
No, that's not something that would change. However, Elevation uses a participatory governance structure, where we do allow all of our homeowners the ability to serve on our Board of Directors. We're also always gathering feedback from our homeowners regarding their satisfaction with, you know, Elevation Community Land Trust homeownership. And whenever we do hear concerns from our homeowners, we work rapidly to address them.
Mr. Shipp?
No.
What makes you... I'm sorry, go ahead. What makes you interested in Trinidad?
Well, I can give one answer, and Lauren, feel free to pipe in. Trinidad itself is an amazing historic city. More generally, Elevation is interested in expanding more and creating more permanently affordable homeownership opportunities in some of the state's more rural communities. So we've seen, you know, even though my time in the affordable housing industry has been relatively short, we have seen a kind of an outsized focus on urban areas from the Division of Housing. And that is something that we are working to address with the Division. We recognize that there are larger gaps to fill, as Lauren mentioned, in rural development. But that doesn't mean that rural communities shouldn't have the same opportunity to build a portfolio of permanently affordable homes that cities like Denver do. So Trinidad is just an amazing community, a historic community, and it's one of several rural communities that Elevation is working with to create more permanently affordable homeownership.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, and this is more of a personal anecdote, but I first really... Trinidad first hit the map for me when I was in a work session probably five or six years ago around your local theater. And it really sparked my interest in just sort of a lot of the culture that you developed there. And I remember several residents of the community that were part of that conversation essentially started saying, "Well, you know, you used to be able to buy a house here for $75,000, and now they're $150,000." And we've, you know, obviously seen that trend across the state and many places across the country. But, you know, I think it's Fisher's Peak, and, you know, I'm sort of personally, again, just interested in the gravel biking community. And so it's an interesting balance as we sort of speed development of rural communities, but also wanting to preserve those opportunities for long-term residents. I think developers like Jeff Shanahan and Louis LaConde also share a real passion for being able to have the impact in rural areas and being able to preserve housing, you know, for folks working in the service industry and wanting to see the success and, you know, the opportunity for the workforce, not just in metro Denver. And so like Charles said, we want to ask organizations certainly being able to support smaller and more rural communities. I just thought I'd also share a personal anecdote as, you know, I've seen, as an outsider, but as I, I should say, observe, some changes in Trinidad. It's always been on my path. My parents live in Phoenix, so I've probably made a couple dozen trips through Trinidad over the last 20 years.
Yeah, that's how I found Trinidad as well, was on I-25 going back and forth. So what other communities in this area, in the southeast part of the state, have Elevation Land Trust programs? Are there any in this part of the state?
We are looking at some development in Fort Barland and Walthamburg. And then, what did I think? I mean, the south part of the state, Charles can certainly talk about the mobile home park that we've acquired in Durango, but I know that's not in the same region. But it is a rural area that we're working in. And then I know, I'm sorry, I'm trying to multitask and pull up a map. We could certainly follow up with you. There are a number of smaller rural communities that have reached out to us. And then we are looking at projects and trying to sort of solve for the same, you know... you know, funding gap and to kind of understand the opportunities there, but we, we don't have any homes that haven't delivered yet. To Charles' point, we've got sort of three homes in Delta, one of which is currently on the market and two more that are finishing rehab. And, um, again, you know, that's not, you know, in the Trinidad area, but just in terms of smaller rural communities.
That, that's helpful. I, I just wanted to know how, what to compare it to. The other thing I was kind of wondering, as I'm trying to picture how this works, when someone purchases one of these homes, they are purchasing just the improvements on the land. Who, are they also responsible to, um, to maintain the land or does Elevation Land Trust work like a, you know, like in a condominium association where the land around the home is maintained or how does that work?
No, they own, if they're purchasing a single-family home, they own a fee simple interest in the home itself and a leasehold interest in the land. So I know Charles briefly mentioned this as part of the presentation that it's a little different in, uh, well, it's very different in single-family homes versus condo associations or a structure that would include a condo. But in the case of a single-family home, the homeowner is responsible for maintaining their lawn and essentially everything that, you know, is on the land, you know, private sewer lines, sheds, fences, any improvements on land. And then we are tied to every homeowner through that 99-year renewable land lease. So that land lease is what really lays out, you know, the relationship between Elevation as a nonprofit and each individual homeowner. I don't know, Charles, if you have anything else to... No, I think that's me.
All right. Anything else? I wondered if our city manager had any questions.
Well, mayor and members of the council, Michael Uerman is on the call with us. I didn't know if he had, had any thoughts.
Oh, yeah.
He would like to express with us.
Mr. Uerman?
Sorry, sorry to put you on the spot, Michael.
No, no, that's, that's fine, Steve. I, I think the, the important point is that, um, we have awarded, uh, a project for 12 units, um, on 516L, which are intended to be townhomes, the incentive funding. Uh, and so what I think is important to the council to know is that, you know, we, when we, when we developed the Housing Now program, I think that's part of the reason why Trinidad has seen a relationship grow and an interest from Elevation Land Trust is because it, you know, one of the slides, uh, Lauren, that you had up there was that, that you guys really look for strong partnerships. And I think that is one of the things that brought the Elevation Land Trust to Trinidad is the fact that you have the Housing Now incentive program. The one thing that I would add, just for clarification from the council, is that that land lease is being substituted in exchange for what the city deed restriction would have been, because the land lease with the land trust is in perpetuity versus our, um, our model. But it's still, like we, we've always said, we'll always accept a, a deed restriction that's more, um, intensive than, but it has to at least meet the, the, the 100% AMI or less, uh, price point. And so, you know, not only does this group, uh, meet those thresholds, they actually beat them in that their deed restriction is in perpetuity, um, and as well as, uh, is targeting an 80% AMI price point, which is definitely lower. Um, you know, but we have had interest in a, a secondary developer that would like to partner as well to continue to bring homes. Uh, and so we look forward to a potential, uh, application. Um, we are running low on funds, uh, in the incentive program, but, uh, tap fees, you know, could also still be at play, um, as we proceed.
Thank you so much for tying that together.
Yeah, and thanks for bringing that point up, Michael. I think that the point about really wanting to go essentially, you know, where we do have strong partnerships is, is I appreciate you bringing that up and that is, is very true. You know, we want to be in communities that have a priority around affordable housing, particularly permanently affordable housing, because we do rely on those partnerships to, as we, you know, come into a community, both develop and sell homes, um, to make sure that, you know, the community understands it's a trusted resource and know that this is an opportunity for, um, a demographic that maybe otherwise wouldn't have access to homeownership at this point.
Did you have any other questions, Mr. Uerman?
No, mayor for town, members of the council, my only follow-up question would be, um, can you talk to us about the, the process you do to solicit the, um, units and how do you match them up with tenants?
Right, I can talk a little bit about that. So, um, we essentially, we have a community engagement process that really identifies everything from those public partners, so everything from, you know, the city to any sort of housing authority or other housing partners, even if they've worked in, uh, like rental affordable housing and then any sort of additional nonprofit partners that work in a space that may serve a similar clientele. And so pretty early on, you know, as essentially I would say, you know, as soon as we know we have a project there, we will start to do outreach to all those partners to make sure they understand our program. Um, you know, again, it sort of depends on every community, but if there's any sort of community navigation program where there are folks, um, you know, that are being compensated to go out in their communities and educate folks about the sort of spectrum of housing options, um, all of those are great resources for us to start to bring education to communities about what a CLT is, uh, what the opportunity provides, maybe not already existing in the market. Uh, we also have a lot of online resources, so we're actually in the process of redoing our website right now, but online classroom where anybody can sign up for free and take, um, Elevation's, you know, course about what a CLT is, what elevation is, how does limited resale price work, what's a shared equity program, um, all of that. And then we require that everybody that applies to our program takes a, I think it's about six-hour CHAPA, um, homebuyer education course, which is also available in person and online. So we really try and drive people through that education process and work with all of our local partners that can, um, sort of be boots on the ground to help with that community education component. And then, um, within, you know, within specific areas of development, you know, really doing outreach to, uh, you know, neighborhood organizations and local employers and, um, you know, school districts, uh, medical providers, you know, really trying to assess with any community, um, who is employing folks that are generally within this income range and may be good candidates for our program. So I would say, you know, our, our goal is not to have a huge staff that's working statewide. Our goal is really to essentially be a kind of a home base and be able to provide technical assistance and guidance and work in collaboration with community and local partners that really know who are residents and know their community the best, um, and educate folks first. And then, you know, for anyone that's interested in this opportunity, um, we're a, a first come, first served waitlist. So what that means is $25 to apply. When somebody enters our waitlist, um, they have essentially five months to go under contracts. And if they haven't gone under contracts by the sixth month, we will ask them to recertify, which is part of our compliance program that we have to make sure, uh, essentially every six months that, you know, somebody still income qualifies. So it's not them going through the entire application process, but it is them resubmitting either, you know, D U twos or pay stubs or whatever, sort of the income verification and, um, same thing on their savings or asset side. But then once homes become available in any given community, we have something called a notice of interest process, which essentially everybody on the waitlist gets an email saying, you know, here's five new properties in our portfolio. If you are interested, please respond. And then if they qualify with a participating lender, it's the first person that submitted their application gets the first opportunity to write a contract on that home. So we take a lot of, I guess I would say the anxiety out of the whole body process in the sense of, you know, they're not competing with multiple offers, they're not, uh, you know, bidding for a cash offer versus conventional financing. Um, it's really like, you know, you've done the work, you've applied to our program, and if you qualify for a mortgage that supports the purchase of this home and you're interested, you get the first opportunity to buy it. So I think that's, that's really different than a lot of programs that tend to operate as a lottery and it's like people could get a house the first month or they could never get chosen in five years or 10 years. Does that answer your question or do you have?
It does. Thank you for that. So that's all I have.
I think that's all we have too. Thank you so much for presenting this to us. I've, I've heard of Land Trust before, but not really understood how they work and I appreciate your, your educating us about it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you for the time and, um, Steve and Julian, thank you for the invitation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, who can I pass the host to?
Audrey Garrett, please.
Well, thank you, Audrey, and have a great rest of your day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to number two, sponsorship of Caveman Music Festival.
Hello.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you all. Um, just a quick report on Monument. Let's kind of pass it to you with it. Uh, this year we're up, uh, in visitors, uh, we're up about 15% from last year, which is phenomenal number. That's year to date, I think it'll continue to grow as we get closer to the end of summer and people realize that they have not taken a trip. Yeah, so I think we're getting into that and, uh, and it's been great. Also, just throw it out there because I'm extremely proud of it, the renovation on the, um, primitive campgrounds, we're up 30% in our, in our visitor stay in the primitive campground this year. So thank you very much for allowing us to, to jump out there and renovate those, those campgrounds. It's, uh, they're very impressive.
I, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I did want to say I was able to get up there this Casp, uh, weekend and had lunch and it was, it was really wonderful and beautiful. And I saw the areas where you're building the primitive campgrounds and it was, everything was packed and it was, looked very good. So I just wanted to tell you I had that experience.
I sent a guy that works for me out to, uh, about a dozen different campgrounds. I'm talking, um, Grand Mesa, I mean, just across the state. And I'm like, just be completely unbiased. I just want to know how we stack up and where we need to improve, you know? And this is after we were done and I just, I'll go down to the north end and I'll just sit there and just stare at it because it's, you know, the way it's been, you know, we terraced it and it's just a cool area to me. And, uh, and he went out to about a dozen different campgrounds and came back and he was like, no bias whatsoever. He said, there's no place in the state like ours. He said, it just, it is, it's, it's ahead above anybody else as far as, you know, cleanliness and, you know, you can really care, you know, tell that, that care's been taken to, to make the improvements. And so we're, we're extremely proud. We, again, we, we really appreciate you all for, for supporting us and, and making that place just awesome.
Making us proud.
Yeah, so, um, on to Caveman, it's, uh, it's, it's going well, the sales are going well. About a week and a half ago, we were, had a big team meeting and this year we've learned a lot from last year. We have a publicist this year, we have people that really work for us on the marketing side that, that are in the industry and, uh, and, uh, and of course we've got a sponsorship coordinator this year and, and whatnot. But as we began talking about a week and a half ago, you know, I kind of brought a careful attention, it's, you know, we're about $200,000 short of getting, of getting this festival paid for. And, um, last year we were quite a lot short and I think that...
That's about last time. Last year you were...
It was a big, big tab. You can't, you can't do that too many times individually. But, um, but anyways, nonetheless, um, you know, last year I felt like it was a, just a very expensive marketing campaign and it was. And, and I think that we're seeing the result of it this year in, in our uptick and, and people coming to the resort. I mean, we see a lot of new faces, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people coming from Missouri and Kansas and Texas and Oklahoma. And, you know, we've had, we've had guests from all over, all over the country, but I mean, and a lot of them are, you know, they, they heard the, the marketing through Caveman. Whether they came to Caveman or not, they at least, they heard about it, they started researching, you know, they dug into it and they decided to visit. So, um, I think that the, the marketing we did last year and the efforts we put into it last year, um, we're, we're seeing the byproduct of it now. With that being said, um, again, we have to go have the meeting. They see, you know, it's kind of started throwing ideas around about selling the naming rights to the festival. So basically, uh, presented by, you know, our city of Trinidad, you know, presents Caveman Music Festival or, um, and so the, the naming rights to the festival. And they started throwing names of, of different companies out and, you know, bigger national companies that these people have worked with in the past. I have not, but they're, they're in this, they live in this world. I told them before we go, you know, pitching this out there to anybody, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come talk to you guys about it because I feel like, you know, out of loyalty and, and the great partnership we already have, it would be foolish not to at least, you know, put it in front of you. And I would rather partner with you guys on it than anyone else anyways. I mean, it makes perfect sense. I mean, we're, we're working to grow tourism, I believe, in, in the city and, and the county and, and of course Monument. So, um, so with that, uh, you know, we're, we're basically, it's, it's kind of, we're at a $200,000 mark that we need to get raised, um, to, to try to get this thing paid for. That's what we would pitch out there to anyone, whether it be, you know, a national brand or the city of Trinidad. If we did it with a national brand, it would be a one-year deal and then we'd look at next year and give them first run or refusal. With the city of Trinidad, I already admitted very clear, if you guys wanted to come on board and do this, this would be for the life of the festival. So from here on out, every year, and I plan to continue on as long as, you know, I'm around, um, it would be Caveman Music Festival presented by or brought to you by the city of Trinidad. And not necessarily every year coming back and saying, hey, you know, we're running short again, so I need another $50,000 or anything. I mean, what we'll do is we'll, we'll jump out this next year. And again, we've learned a lot, um, we're, we're getting in front of it, but we will start day one after the festival this year raising sponsorship dollars. And people are, you know, these national brands are, they're, they're jumping on board now. They're jumping on at a smaller level, but they're jumping on. And we're treating them good and, and they're seeing our product, which is very good. And we know that those relationships are going to continue to grow, but the way, you know, the way we would approach it is we'll jump out the day after we, we were done with this year's festival, we will start raising money through sponsorships. Now, if we have a $600,000 budget next year and we raise $600,000 in the city of Trinidad and Monument Lake and Caveman Music Festival, we, you know, we throw our event. If we ever come up short, you would be our last ask. We wouldn't, you know, we, we will do the work for the large majority of the year. And if we get to, you know, the end of July and we see that we, we may have come up short, you know, whether it's 10, 20, 5,000, whatever the number is, you would certainly be the last ones on our list of requests. And, uh, so that is, if I make sense on what I'm saying, but that's, that's kind of where we're at. And again, I just, uh, out of, out of the loyalty and the friendship and, and partnership, I feel like, uh, it would all be right to visit with you all first, so.
Sponsorships are great, Brett. What numbers do you anticipate, do you project that you need in terms of ticket sales right now? Maybe not even to break even, but just to even get close.
I think if we had, if we, if we were at 3,000 in ticket sales, we'd be in pretty good shape. Again, right now in sponsorship dollars, um, we, you know, we're at about 40,000 in cat, in, in actual dollars. We're about 60,000, 70,000 in trade, which the trade is great. I mean, you know, we're getting, you know, there, you know, Sunbelt's giving us generators, you know? I mean, that's a, that's a $25,000 ticket, you know? So, yeah, I mean, it's as good as money to me. money to me. I don't need the cash. The trade would be great. But yeah, so right now, we're at, we're at about $150,000 in ticket sales right now. I anticipate last year, and we're only a few hundred tickets off of where we were last year. I anticipate in the last six weeks of this thing, things really ramp up. We're hitting a major marketing campaign all over, especially all over the Midwest right now. I think we've got 28 or 29 radio stations that have started our ads. And we did all that through trade, which was great. But we're doing giveaways with them, and that's what they want.
So are you doing sponsorship levels, like silver, gold, bronze?
No, no. So our sponsorship guy, he works for NASCAR, became friends with him. Monument Lake Resort actually sponsored a NASCAR in Vegas this year. And we actually, we were on that card for the rest of the season. It was pretty cool. But I met this guy kind of through that, and then he came to work for us. And yeah, no, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Sponsorship levels?
Oh, no. He was, he's really kind of more of a, he wanted to leave it open-ended. He didn't want to lock into any dollar amount, which has been good. I mean, because we're not handcuffing anybody to a certain dollar amount. If somebody can come in at a $1,000 level, great, we're going to do it. But we're not going to lock you out because you can't do 10, you know. And so we've, our sponsorship dollars that we've received have been generally in around the $13,000, $15,000 range. And the majority of that money has come from liquor, like Bacardi, they jumped on. And we're promoting some of their products. But really what they do is they give you the money, then you turn around and buy the product. It's not, it's kind of a, in Colorado, that's just what Colorado works. They can't give you $15,000 worth of product. They basically give you the money and you purchase the product.
How are you doing your vendors?
How are we doing the vendors?
Yeah, last year, I heard you had like a handful of vendors.
We did, yep. And this year, right now, we've got seven food vendors lined up, committed and on board. And we've got about eight retail merch vendors, so we've been selling goods, things like that. So we've, yeah, I think last year, we had two vendors, you know. And that was the only thing that I'd heard last year that people really wanted to see more of, is they like to eat different stuff and shop and things like that.
I'm not for it at all, sponsorship, because if we sponsor you, we had issues with Blues Fest, we had issues with all these people. And the city, right now, our budget, that's the most money we got, it's budgeted tight this year. And I understand your point, but you're running Monument Lake. We're not really involved in the Caveman.
Not us, yep.
I mean, that's my point. And I think it's a good idea. I'm not saying that it's not. And I'm sure there's someone we could help a little bit, but right now, that's a tough thing for us. Our marijuana sales are down, our sales tax are down. And if we give you that kind of money, I can guarantee you there'll be three or four other people in here wanting it too. And what do we do? How do we choose that? And I agree with you for tourism and stuff like that. It does help. And I'm very thankful for you for what you do up there. It's great. And the lake and that. But everybody comes to us for money, and our bank is broke.
Well, and I understand. And again, this was not, this is more out of our relationship than we have.
Well, yeah, I understand that. I appreciate that. That's really a good deal.
You know, if we went and got Arctic Coopers to come and we gave them the naming rights, I don't ever want it to be, any of the partners we have now are going to say, wow, why wouldn't you mention that to us? I mean, so that's, again, out of loyalty and our relationship now, this was my first stop. I completely understand, and I do get, the first thing I thought about was the Blues Fest. And I know they're not having it. I don't think they're having it this year. And I'm sure that they wanted to have it.
Yeah, they did.
So I get it. But again, this was completely out of just, I think it was out of the relationship we have. I owed it to you.
We appreciate that, we really do. I think it's great. It's just that, like I say, we don't have a bank anymore. It's gotten to be a point that we have to deal with the whole community, not just one area. And it makes it tough for us. And I'm sure that we can definitely find something to help sponsor a little bit of that. But right now, that would be tough for us. And I think you've done an outstanding job at Monument Lake. I've been there, and it's really great. I hope you continue. But we kind of need to watch our budget. I mean, we've had issues now, and we haven't even got our fourth quarter coming up, or third quarter, fourth.
We're on second quarter.
Yeah. And it's way down. And we have a lot of infrastructure problems. We've got streets to repair. We've got everything in the world. And if we want tourism, we've got to make the town look good, too.
I understand.
And it's really, really tough for us. I mean, I don't want to be a hard ass or a kind of bear. And that is only my opinion. I mean, everybody else has their own. But I think it's really tough for us to do stuff like that, especially for a large amount. I don't know how else to put it, and I'm sure everybody else has their own opinion, and I would share that with them. But it is tough.
I would just say, on the other hand, I think that the concept of tying Monument Lake Resort more closely to Trinidad in people's minds is a good one. And that's something I think that is worth pursuing. And we're considering, we've changed our lodging tax advisory board situation, so that it's more open to kind of quality of life things and possibly festivals. And since we're down a couple festivals, it might, there might be something. But I don't think we can do 200,000, but I think there might be something, and I think we should continue.
Yeah, definitely. And then, you know, next year, it might be a great improvement with our lodging tax, if it peaks at what we thought. There might be a possibility to really contribute there.
Sure.
And I think that's great, because it would help us a lot.
I think it would too, need to somehow drive tourists as well here, not just out to Monument.
Exactly. That's the goal. I mean, that's the way I see it. I think that in a whole last year, I think the community in a whole, even for just that weekend, I think, I was told that it was a very big weekend for the community. And we're just going to be able to build on that. I mean, right now, festival-wise, we're like the Lone Ranger. We're the only one left. I mean, the Seven Peaks, which is a 17, 18,000 cap festival, they're done. You know, and they're just down the road, down the road in a dirt field. I don't know why anybody'd go there anyway. They did, you know. And then, Spanish Peaks, I talked to owner of that a few days last weekend at the resort, and he said, I'm done. And then I know that Trinidadio, which I hate to say that, but it is our community.
Well, we are having a winter festival, right? That's, I think you're involved with. See, and those are things, too, that we'd like to share, that make good, too. But again, our money is really tough. But I think if you stick with us and work with us or with the lodging tax and other things going on, we might be able to help you. And like I say, I think it's a great asset. You guys did a good job. We want to continue to see you there and work on this.
I'm not going anywhere.
Just put some bigger fish in there, is all I can say.
They don't let them go. They kill everything out there. We try to slow them down, but they just keep it off.
Mr. McGee, did you have any comments or questions?
No. The only thing I would say is, I agree with the council looking at our budget. A couple hundred thousand dollars is an awfully big ask, but I do feel very strongly with council's direction, we can come up with some amount of support. I do think this is something that the city should be involved in, support financially, at least from a marketing standpoint, and help get some people here. We had our first year last year, and it was hidden this. I'm expecting this year to be even better. And this is one of those things where a lot of festivals like this start off very small, but then next thing you know, they're something that people come from all around the world who should attend.
Tell you where it is, an example.
I can't think of a single festival that hasn't started that way. And I think it's, with all the good work that's going on at Monument Lake, it's definitely incumbent upon us to show that support. So we do have a little bit of reserves in our lodging tax. And Mayor Protemo, you did allude to our new ordinance, 10% of our lodging tax funding can go to support life or art. And this also probably falls in the quality of life bucket as well.
And our recreation.
And our recreation, all of those things. So we can crunch some numbers and see what would be an appropriate suggestion to make to council to certainly support Mr. McGee's efforts. I don't know that the city is to that point to be the prime city Trinidad sponsor for it, but we definitely want to assist how we can. And so we'll start fine-tuning those numbers. In fact, we have a retreat with the lodging tax advisory board tomorrow. And this would fall in the budget discussions. We can bring it up with them as well and have that conversation.
And we will hold off on the naming rights, too. I'll just let you guys discuss it, and if we can make sense of it. And again, the thing for me is, the other people involved, it's cool to have a festival, it's cool to do this. I'm thinking it's really cool to get as many people from outside of this area into this area. I know they're going to come, they're going to visit, and they're going to go home. But in anticipation, they're going to come again, you know. And that's what we're reaching for out there. And I think that it just, it's just Trinidad. I mean, I just, I love the place, so.
And I think we're also all ears on how the city can help promote, get the word out, whatever we can do, direct people to ticket sales. We want to make it as successful as possible to you as well. So let us know what else we can do besides money that would assist you all.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
All right. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. Good to see you all.
All right. Well, that concludes our agenda, unless anybody else had something they wanted to talk about in terms of future work sessions, anything?
Go ahead.
I was going to ask you about the River Bottom, about Jeff, and maybe some updates on the Greenway Foundation.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I wasn't specific.
The River Bottom. What, do we have a problem? Okay.
Yeah, and I can speak to that very quickly. We're nearing the point where we're ready for the Greenway Foundation to come back and do another presentation. To you all, we've been focusing on land acquisition and finalizing those plans, so we can get to that point where we have full construction plans to bid out and look for grant money. So we're pushing as hard as we can on that. Absolutely.
If we can get Bob Justin again to bring up some projects, and what's going on with some of our newer projects, if we got anything in the works and that. And I know First Street looks pretty good, the section that they got done. It's going to be pretty nice when we get it all done. And we're supposed to, looking at Main Street here, we got an update on what we're going to do there. And also patching on the street, the potholes and stuff that we need. But it's kind of nice to just get caught up with some of the projects that we know what's going on. Because a lot of people ask, how come we're not doing this and I'm doing that? So we need some answers.
We'll bring Bob to the next work session.
Yeah, we can chew on him a little bit.
Well, that concludes our work session today. Thank you.